I'd like to call the regularly scheduled Board of Selectmen meeting for Monday, August 3, 2020 to order. We are doing a Zoom meeting. First order of business is Pledge of Allegiance. And I think if you can see me on your screen, we've got an American flag in the background. Charles, would you please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Charles. Public four. Hold on. Let's see if there's anybody else, anyone from the public. I don't see anyone that I don't recognize. Okay. Item three, approved minutes, July 20, 2020, regular meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
With their approval.
Second.
Any comments, questions, changes, et cetera? Hearing none. Call the question. All in favor. Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Selectman Haverta.
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner.
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruoff.
Aye.
Selectman Hoy is also an aye. Let's move on to item four. We have one item there for Rick Maynard, and as discussed, take possible action to contract with Field Turf for repair to the center area of the Guilford High School stadium field. Rick, good morning. And want to just give us a little background?
Good morning. Okay, so that field is about 14 years old now. You know, the warranty was eight years, so we've really gotten our use on it. As you all know, that's scheduled to be replaced next, next year around this time. However, the center area of the field is severely worn. I mean, so bad that the, you can actually see the carpet backing, you know, the little grass green fabric is gone on some areas there. We know it's, it's got to get done. You know, it's going to have, hopefully, two more seasons. Hopefully, it'll have some kind of fall season and a spring season. And we really need to get it done. Field turf is, I would say is really sole source because it's a field turf field. They've been doing the maintenance on it, you know, twice a year, pretty much ever since we've had it. And they've cut out about a 30-foot by 30-foot area that's going to come out. It's basically where the logo is, the G. But they're not putting the G back. It would cost a lot more to replace that. It's just going to be green grass, basically. So there'll be no center logo at all, you know, for the remainder of the life of that field. And the cost is $10,715. I brought this up to the field committee at the meeting last week. They endorse doing this. They know it really needs to get done. We don't really have a lot of choice. It's, you know, again, it's being actively used. And I don't want to go and say it's unsafe. I don't like saying that, but it's clearly, it needs to get done. It's a, it's a maintenance issue. It's like if it was, you know, an area on a soccer field, a grass field, we'd have to sod, we'd have to spend the money and sod it. So this is not sod. It's artificial grass, but it's, it's an area that's worn pretty badly and has to get redone.
Rick, but isn't, excuse me, isn't it on the agenda, on the schedule, to get the entire carpet replaced in a year or two?
It is. It is, Lou, but it-
Tell me. So we're going to spend $10,000 and rip it up in a year?
Yeah, believe me, it's a little painful, but it's, we don't really have a choice. It's worn so badly that it's that center area where there's a lot of play, you know, like where face off is for soccer and lacrosse and, you know, at the start of, you know, in those sports especially.
So let me ask you the corollary question. Does that mean that we can push off another year, the replacement of the entire thing?
I wouldn't say so. I wouldn't say so. The rest of the field, it really has to be done. It's, the ultraviolet light over time starts to break down the fibers. And again, we're at 14 years. The warranty was eight. So we're, I mean, we're close to double, you know, the amount of life that that field should have had.
Well, so, you know, not the lecture, because it's not, I'm not directing this at you, but, I mean, the reality is, if you defer maintenance enough, it gets more expensive.
Yeah.
And so when people complain about spending things, this is a consequence. And it's not you. I know you advocated these changes earlier. It's frustrating.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, are you sure it's going to be, I mean, I'm not, I'm not trying to be gloom and doom, but are you sure there's going to be enough real sports use in the next school year, which is September to June, that it warrants this $10,000?
Any use of that field over the next year or 18 months, whatever it is until we replace it, whether it's once or 150 times, this needs to be done because that area in the center of the turf would not pass an impact test. Lou, you know what that means?
I'm assuming it's some sort of process by which they, you know, apply the, you know, the normal use and see if it-
No, the impact is when the athlete falls on it and how much cushion is there, particularly as it relates to concussions.
So Matt, you're saying if there's an injury and we don't fix the field, we are potentially liable?
I was trying to say that without actually saying it, but yes.
Right, right.
Okay.
All right.
Can I? I'm not, I'm not opposed to the expenditure. I mean, I think it's either spend this money or stop using the field. We have to do it. But what I'm wondering is, did we discuss this during the budget deliberations? I don't remember talking about it. And what always concerns me is, you know, $10,000 or $11,000 comes up now, and then in the spring, is there going to be another section of it that needs to be addressed? Sometimes I feel like we are addressing things piecemeal rather than as a whole. Is this a surprise, or do we know about this?
So, so as I mentioned, twice a year, Field Turf comes and they work on that field. And so the most recent time they came was, I believe it was in June, they came. And they just saw the amount of wear on that field. I guess mostly from last fall because it wasn't used much in the spring, you know, from football and soccer and field hockey on that field. And so, again, spring had very, I think, almost no use. It's getting a lot of use right now. You know, basically, the lacrosse season is going on right now for the high schools, boys and girls. They've been playing several times a week on that field right now.
So that says to me that when it was inspected six months earlier, say December, it would have been at the same level of wear. I mean, why didn't they bring it to our attention then? And it goes to whether there's anything else that needs to be addressed on it.
I think the last time it was inspected, Sue, was about last July, probably. Usually we do summer or fall and spring. I think it was last July we did it. So the fall season would have, you know, created more of the wear on it to the point where it is right now and needs to get redone.
Rick, if they can piece in a, are you done? So I didn't mean to-
Yes, I am. Yes, thanks.
Rick, if they can piece in a piece now, why can't they just piece in the rest of the field? I mean, if this is a piece, and this is going to be less than a year old next year when it's all due to be replaced, why does the entire carpet have to be replaced? And they can't just do the ends and leave the new center in?
Rick, I'll take that. Currently, we are evaluating the options on what kind of turf we're going to put back on that field. In particular, we might be looking to mirror the new turf field, which has significantly greater shock pad and absorption over what was put in 14 years ago. The technology has changed in that time to make these fields safer and more resilient in terms of the impact.
All right. I mean, if, if we can update when we're redoing the entire field, I mean, if it's an update thing, that makes sense. And sometimes it just makes sense to do the whole thing anyway. But, okay, I mean, you're looking at it in the worst-case scenario. All right. I understand.
Rick, I had a question. Oh, Pam, go ahead.
Yeah, the only thing that I hesitate is, you got this one company that, you know, arguably is the sole source, but they're also the ones, you know, unilaterally kind of making the, you know, assumption or conclusion that it's, it needs to be done right now. It could never wait for the year. You know, anytime you got the one company controlling everything, it, it's hard to be certain that we're getting the most accurate information. I mean, is there any kind of third-party consultant that could just go in there and just confirm that, yeah, we have to get this done? That we're not just doing this because someone who can sell something for $10,000 is telling us to do this?
Well, I think the field committee also, you know, field committee has walked it. They've seen it, and they agree it needs to be done.
But I don't know, I mean, you know, disrespect to the field committee, I just want to, you know, do we have the expertise to make these conclusions, to know that it's unsafe in case a person fell, you know, athlete fell, or?
I'm fairly comfortable if they've walked it and that the grass strands are actually worn to the point where you're looking at carpet. Yeah, I don't know if the word expertise can be used, but I mean, it sounds like that would be pretty obvious to anybody.
I like, I like the idea, Pam's suggestion. I think that makes a lot of sense to have that done. And as I look at the quote, there's so much emphasis on the replacement of the logo. I understand all the conversation about, I get that that's not why we're doing it. But if that at some point, that must have come up on, on the radar of this company that we were doing something with our logo. I just think it's a good idea to make sure that there's a physical need for it.
How much do we want to spend to find that out? You're talking about hiring somebody else to come in, a consultant to come in and do the evaluation on it. And before we do that, we probably need to go get three bids, right, Pam?
You know, if it's less, if we can get somebody to come in and give an evaluation for like, you know, I have no idea. I'm pulling numbers from my hat, but like, you know, $1,000 or something, hopefully, a little below that, then you can get around getting three quotes on something of that price range.
Can I throw in a-
And you have a time issue. You have a time issue. So you can get around on that alone, I think.
Yeah, the time issue is that the high school's going to be actively on, we think, you know, based on what we're hearing from CIAC, they're going to be on that field football by the end of August. So we only have a couple of weeks. I tentatively have this, assuming, you know, pending your approval, I have Field Turf set up for either next, next week, I think it's the 13th, or the week of the 18th to do it. So I told them I had to wait till the Board of Selectmen approves it, but we have a tentative, tentative date for them to come in and do the work.
When that was a solo box? I mean, I could ask someone like, you know, Jeff DiNofrio's been all over our fields and all the issues. I mean, maybe he can come up with a quick name that, someone that would be willing to come out like this week or, you know, I don't know. But-
I'm going to come down the side with Charles. Paul Schmidt is an engineer. He is chairman of the Fields, the Field Committee. He's dealt with these kind of things all over the, all over the state and other municipalities. I don't know specifically turf fields, but he is an engineer. And Rick, he was, he walked the field as well?
Yes, he did.
Okay, I threw it out there.
Yeah, no, no, I appreciate it. But in the interest of the time, and I, quite honestly, I think going forward, we will need to make sure that we don't do the single source where the evaluation recommendation and implementation is done by the same company. It does absolutely lend the possibility that we'd get, we'd be taken advantage of at some point. On the other hand, I'm not impugning, I do not want to impug Field Turf's reputation and their business practices. I don't think that's what, is that at heart here. But I think this is, I think it absolutely is a good point, Sue and Pam, that we need to be careful about arrangements like this. That's typically why we have, you know, multiple bids for our purchasing stuff, et cetera. So, again, we, I think, unfortunately, we find ourselves in a time crunch here. So I would suggest that we, we move it forward.
Again, I'm comfortable enough with this one, and I'll even move it. But I do want to also support Susan's other point about these kinds of things popping up outside of the budget cycle. I mean, you know, a little bit of foresight could, could have predicted this. It would have been nice to know in the budget cycle where these kinds of things are actually supposed to be vetted. So I'll move it. But I hope we've learned, you know, some better ways of doing it for the future.
Rick?
Like you said, Matt, if you remember, as Lou pointed out, two years ago, I suggested we have this in the budget because I knew this field was going to be getting worn out bad enough. And now we're at that point where we have to repair it.
No question. We've had, we've had discussions in the capital budget for the last couple of years about turf field replacement. However, not this specific item about a maintenance, general maintenance or upgrade to a certain piece of this. I think we probably are a year too late, obviously. It would be nice to be, you know, that field being built and taken care of so we don't have to spend 10 grand. Rick, I have another question that Sue sort of brought up a little bit, and you and I had a conversation on this, on the scope of work on the proposal. It says, replace one center logo with all green turf, sheer in new logo, infield new logo, and site cleanup. I just want to make sure, we're not, we're not talking about having a, you know, sew in a G.
No.
Right? So this language in here suggests there's more work to be done, but they use, are they using the logo area as, you know, is that what that means?
Yes, Matt, it's the logo area. Because I actually talked to him last week to confirm that. He said, look, we're not replacing the logo. I want to make sure that was very clear. And see if that changed the price at all. They said, no, it's actually the logo area. What they mean is they're not putting a new logo in, it's just, you know, green grass, basically.
Okay. All right. I think, Charles, you moved it. Is there a second?
I did. Second.
Any further discussion? Call the question. All in favor, Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Selectman Haverta.
Aye.
Selectwoman, woman Renner.
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruoff.
Aye.
Selectman Hoy is also an aye. Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
Item five, Public Works Director Tom Fillion. We have three items today. The first of which is, does it takes possible action on award, to award bid number two dash 2021, sand and sand for snow and ice control. Tom?
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right. Looks like the bid was won by the Hubert Butler Company out of Portland at 1925 a cubic yard. So this will be the first time we go without Seashore, but their price being $2190. And I did talk to him beforehand, saying that you need a sharpened pencil a little bit if we can then go with him. And the bottom line is, this company also agreed to two more one-year contracts at the same price. So if we feel like we want to exercise that option. So for 2,600 cubic yards at 1925, we're at $50,000, $50 for the cost of the sand.
Okay.
That's delivered, there's no delivery charge? That's the charge. That's the entire expense?
That, yes, that's the delivery and, and the charge for the sand.
All right. Tom, I know you've done business with Seashore for a long time. They're very responsive. They're, they show up, you know, hours after you've made a, made a call if you're running low. What do you know about the Butler Construction Company in Portland?
I talked to, I talked to Kevin, who's in charge over here, and we went over a couple of things as far as the quality of the sand, his, how many trucks he has to deliver, the fact that he's going over a bridge no matter what over there in Portland, either Route 3 or the Portland Bridge. And he told me, no matter what, they will get that there. Quantity, they crush a million tons of stone. So this is more like a remanufactured type sand. And the fact, I did vote in our commission for Seashore still, you know, because I figured the last year. But I got voted out five to one. So this is where we're at.
Gotcha.
So this guy, he can get the sand there with no issues. And we do have stuff in the contract where it says that if I need it within 24 hours, they have to get it here.
Okay.
So we'll see how good they do.
Good.
I think we should skip this and just cancel all snow and ice.
Aye.
But in lieu of that, I'll move it.
A second?
Second.
Second, I assume. All right. Call the question. All in favor, Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Selectman Haverta.
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner.
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruoff.
Aye.
Selectman Hoy is also an aye. All right. Item two, consider and take possible action on purchase of treated soil from Morton Salt off of the Capital Region Council of Government Bid. Tom?
Okay, we've bated for the Capital Region, they give their lowest bid. And Morton Salt, once again, was for the treated, for our region six, they came in at 6266. Last year was 7010. So we're making out because of the easy winter we had last year. So we still need 700 tons, and that comes to a total of $43,862 from Morton Salt. And I am going to look into their rock salt, too. I'm trying to get a price on that, because usually we have to wait till October. So I'm trying to get a price from them for the rock salt also.
Hey, Tom, I forgot to ask on the sand, how did the new price compared to last year's price?
Last, well, last year's price was 1785, and it's 1925. That's the best that they could do. But Seashore came in originally at 2235. They dropped it down to 2190.
Yeah, I saw that. I just didn't know what last year's price. Okay.
Yep.
I'll move the salt, too, I guess.
Second?
Second.
Call, call the question. Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Selectman Haverta.
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner.
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruoff.
Aye.
Selectman Hoy is also an aye. Motion carries. Item three, consider and take possible action to purchase 12 Wassaup Plow Swing Cylinders from Dependable Hydraulics. Tom?
Okay, we're looking to get 12 swing cylinders for our Wassaup Plows, which is the plow that we have most common here. The cost was $850 per cylinder compared to $1638 that we would have paid from another company that builds them. There's only two companies that build them. So we have an opportunity to get them for basically half price. We need to purchase 12 in order to save on shipping charges, because this way they can go common carrier. And that charge would have been a flat rate of $189. If we were to buy them individually and go with UPS, whatever, we could pay up to $200 per cylinder for shipping charges. So, and then the other company sells out of Canada, so there could be some custom problems, which we had an issue with before on a part coming down through there. So the total is 12 cylinders at $850 for $10,200. We usually run about, we can possibly go through at least six these year.
Excellent. Any, does anyone want to move that?
Some moved.
Second?
I'll second, but I got a couple of questions.
Absolutely.
I mean, that's such a dramatic difference. I mean, it makes you wonder, this, I feel like I'm stealing a page from, from Charles. What's the explanation for how they could be, that, at that literally half the price?
Well, we're going through Dependable, which we use all the time over here. And it's in the United States they're doing it. So I guess on that aspect there, it's just cheaper for parts and anything like that. I mean, a lot of this stuff comes out of China, too. So it is the company that we're, the other company is out of Canada. And that's the best we can come up with. It's, I don't know if it's the materials would be cheaper or whatever, or just the fact that it's coming out of China, you know, and the cost that we got there.
I mean, it could be just as reliable. Do you know anybody else has used them? I mean, it's, you know, it's classic stuff.
Well, Dependable, we use all the time anyways. And anytime we have to repack something, whatever, we all, so nothing, we just got done with changing out a cylinder, a lift cylinder on one of our loaders. And we, instead of paying $4,000 for, through WI Clark, we ended up paying like, I think, $1,200 by having Dependable repack the cylinder. We took it off, repacked it, put a new rod and anything like that. So we're trying to save money over here the best we can.
Yeah, I just, I just want to make sure it's, this is reliable, too, though.
Well, I can't guarantee that, but we will find out, you know. Like I said, we're at half price, so we'll see where it goes from there.
And Tom, you said you use about six of these a year?
Yeah, a lot of times on the swing plows like that, when these guys are pushing, they catch something, you know, they can catch something off the road, or they put too much pressure on the plow. And a lot of times, these, you know, the pit, the swing pistons will give way. Either you scratch the rod, or you break the rod, or you-
Yeah, no, I just, yeah, I can appreciate they have a minimum of the 12, and I just want to, you know, we don't want to be a parts depot. But if you're using six or seven a year, it's no big deal.
Yeah, this is something that definitely will get used. It's not something that would go to waste.
Okay. Have I, has this been moved yet, or?
Yeah, moved and seconded, so. Anything further? Let's call the question. All in favor, Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Selectman Haverta.
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner.
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruoff.
Aye.
Selectman Hoy is also an aye. Motion carries. Thank you very much, Tom.
Can I, can I ask Tom something?
Yeah.
It's Pam. Tom, the rock salt, you know, so historically, you take part in the state, you know, procurement, and then they give you the result in October. Are we, have we taken part in that this year? But we just don't have the results?
Yes, we have. Right. We don't, the results don't usually come into, you know, October. Last year was really late. I want to be proactive. So that's why I'm-
So-
-important.
No, and I appreciate it. And I just also wanted to make sure. So if you go down that road with Morton, and they give you a price, you know, we're going to have to kind of work through with Matt. You know, you can't necessarily just give it to them, even though you're happy with their price. We're going to have to figure that one out. You know what I mean?
Okay.
That's it.
I get it.
That's it.
Well, the, we're buying that off the Krick contract, right?
Yes, yes, we are.
Which means we don't have to go out to bid, right? Because we're buying off a consortium contract that we participated.
That's true, if the rock salt is part of that.
Okay.
Yep.
Good. All right.
Okay, have a good day.
Thank you. All right. Item seven, right? We're on seven now? There's seven, yes, we are. Appointments and resignations.
Why does mine say six?
Well, on the online, it says seven, so.
Yes.
All right. I agree with you, though. Where'd the extra one come in? Pledge of Allegiance became to, I see it is six, though. It should be six. All right. One, act on resignation received from Charles Frey from the Board of Police Commissioners. Is there a motion to accept the resignation with regret and thanks for his service?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Call the question. All in favor, Selectman Renner, I mean, Select, Selectman Federici.
Aye.
I'm looking at the screen here. Select, Selectman Haverta.
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner.
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruoff.
Aye.
Selectman Hoy also. Item two, seven dot two, recommendation will appoint Edward Huguenot to the Board of Police Commissioners for a term to expire June 30, 2024. I'd like to make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Yeah, go.
Call the question. All in favor, Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Selectman Haverta.
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner.
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruoff.
Aye.
Selectman Hoy is also an aye. Item six dot three, act on a recommendation received from Peter Bouvet from the Harbor Management Commission. Is there a motion to accept with appreciation and regret?
Some move.
And a second?
Second.
Call the question. Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Selectman Haverta.
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner.
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruoff.
Aye.
Select, Selectman Hoy is also an aye. Six dot four, act on a recommendation to move Joseph Anastasio from alternate to regular member of the Harbor Management Commission for a term to expire July 31, 2024. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Some move.
And a second?
Second.
Second.
Call the question. Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Select, Selectman Haverta.
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner.
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruoff.
Aye.
Selectman Hoy is also an aye. Six dot five, act on a recommendation to move Bonnie Burns from an alternate to a regular member on the Harbor Management Commission for a term to expire July 31, 2024. Is there a motion? Burns from an alternate to a regular member on the Harbor Management Commission for a term to expire July thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Is there a motion?
Some move.
Some move.
And a second?
Second.
Call the question. All in favor, Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Selectman Har, Havertah.
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner.
Aye.
Selectwoman Ru, uh, Ruoff.
Aye.
Selectman Hoy is also an aye. Uh, item uh six dot six, act on resignations received from Eric Hedberg and Phil Maltese from the Guilford Lakes Golf Course Commission. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
And a second?
Second.
Call the question. All in favor, Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Selectman Havertah. Select, Selectwoman Renner.
Aye.
Select uh, woman Ruoff.
Aye.
Selectman Hoy is also an aye. Uh, six dot seven, act on a recommendation to move Laura Hartman from an alternate to regular member on the Guilford Lakes Golf Course Commission to fill a vacancy for a term to expire September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Is there a motion?
Some move.
Second.
And a second? Uh, call the question. Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Select, uh, Selectman Havertah.
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner.
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruoff.
Aye.
Selectman Hoy is also an aye. Uh, item seven, request for the use of town property, act on request from the Guilford Police Department to use the green, place a sign on the green, and approve its application for variance for the, uh, from the noise control ordinance for its national night out taking place October sixth, twenty twenty. Is there a motion?
Some move.
And a second? Uh, I see Chief Deputy Chief Hyatt, uh, so to be Chief Hyatt, uh, is on. Butch, is there anything you want to mention about this event?
Uh, yeah, thank you for approving that, and I, uh, that date certainly is tentative right now, depending on what's going on with COVID, and uh, that may change, but we just wanted to lock that in. So thank you.
Great.
Tom, tell me, explain a little bit about the noise, uh, the need for the noise ordinance uh section.
Well, uh, last year, we had a DJ down on the uh, on the green and played a lot of uh, kind of dance music for the kids and uh, and game music where they did things uh uh out there on the green in front of the bandstand. It's not, uh, it's not any louder than anything else that goes on down there, but uh, we always get the ordinance for uh, for that music.
Okay, so it's not anything going later into the night and that kind of stuff?
No, it's, uh, and as a matter of fact, by dark, it'll be, it'll be done. We actually changed the hours on the original hours, uh, w- would have gone to probably eight o'clock at night, but because we had to move it so late into the uh, into the fall, I think we're ending it at seven.
Okay, fine, all right. We've got a motion, right? We're all.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second. Butch, I'm going to vote yes only if you agree to uh, uh, dance in the Congo line with me again uh, this summer like we did last summer.
You got it. I'm going to vote yes only if I don't have to watch that.
Call, uh, let's call the question. Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Selectman Havertah.
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner.
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruoff.
Aye.
Selectman Hoy is an aye. I look forward to being there with you, Butch.
Aye, thanks.
Uh, seven, uh, seven dot two, uh, act on a request from the Arthur Murray Dance Studio to use the green Tuesday evenings for group dance class. Let's uh, for purposes of discussion, is there uh, motion to do so?
Some move it.
And a second?
Second.
This, this is challenging. Um, the uh, the town ordinance requires uh, that uh, use of the green uh is restricted to Guilford nonprofit organizations uh for official use of the green. Um, these folks obviously are a for-profit organization. However, the rules about use of the green, uh, usually, I think the the cutoff is at forty. Uh, gatherings on the green can take place um up to forty people where you then need to get permission to use the green, right? Um, so the question here is, yeah, Pam, you're, you're, you're going to get the call on this one.
Jumping all on this one.
That's right, because I, because I'm not playing a lawyer on TV today, that's for sure. Um, so Pam, you want, Pam, you want to talk about this one a little bit?
No, I I will have to re- research that and then get back to you. I I would, uh, you know, there are nu- numerous um requirements with the green, and and I'm not sure the the for-profit use versus the not-for-profit use may be its own rule, regardless of the forty people and whether you need a permit issue. Um, I could see, you know, all sorts of problems once you open that box to commercial use, for-profit use of the green, and you've, it's hard to pick winners and losers on that. Um, so there's, you know, so kind of procedurally, you may have issues, but I think, I have a feeling without the document in front of me that, you know, you can't be doing a for-profit use of it anyway, but I'd need to circle back to the board on it.
Yeah. I I appreciate that, Pam. One of, one of the things that occurred to me uh many, many years ago, um, I took uh dog obedience training for the the first dog we had, and it was conducted on the green. Uh, half a dozen uh families with their dogs, and it's clearly it was uh run by a for-profit, an individual who was uh in business for themselves, whether they're incorporated or not, who knows? It doesn't really matter. And I think there are probably a significant number of other instances where people have used the green in a similar capacity. Um, you know, not, not large enough to 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 attract, uh, you know, uh, any discerning eye. Uh, but I I at least applaud the Arthur Murray Dance School for coming and 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 bringing it to our attention before they did it, uh, as opposed to just showing up and, you know, five or six couples out there dancing on the green having some fun. Uh, well, not fun, but like, learning, learning the the dance steps. So the, you know, the question that naturally came to me was, you know, how are they going to do this? Are they intending to try to put down, uh, you know, uh, a temporary floor out on the green? Uh, or are they just actually going to do the dancing on the green itself uh without, without a surface? But uh, but Pam, we'll wait, we'll wait to hear from you.
Okay. I'd like to, just a quick question, and not a question so much, is, I kind of lean towards Matt. I mean, they're only talking forty-five minutes, and I can appreciate the uh, the legalese and the precedents and all that kind of thing, but if, uh, you know, I think I I could be amendable to it as just kind of a community event to get people outside a little bit and stuff. I I, I'd like to find a way to make it work for them if we could, you know, broading business and, go ahead, Cindy, I'm sorry.
Um, no, that's okay. About six weeks ago, there was another Guilford resident who wanted to do something on the green, and she was going to charge and give some of the money uh to some other, to a nonprofit group, but she was going to be able to keep some of the money. And so I don't see anywhere here, um, they, it says Tuesday, so it's more than one night. It's Tues- Tuesdays without dates attached. Are they going to be charging the people that they're going to be teaching to dance? Because then we're back in that situation where they're using the green to make money for their business. Maybe they're not. I just needed to know that.
Yeah, I, I, I'm going to assume that it is for uh, the for-profit. Uh, they uh, they regularly teach dance lessons. In fact, my wife and I took swing lessons there some time ago. Um, and there was some discussion at that point about using the green uh for uh, just in general, not because of COVID, but just a great spot to do it on, so. All right, Pam, we'll wait to hear back from you on that.
Okay.
So uh, we need a motion to table it. Uh, is there a motion to table?
Some move.
And a second?
Second.
Uh, on the question to table, Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Selectman Havertah.
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner.
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruoff.
Aye.
Selectman Hoy is also an aye. Uh, correspondence, anything? Committee reports? Nothing new since uh last time?
Yeah, I've been on the two weeks.
Old business? New business? Public forum? Hearing none? Uh, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some move. Second.
Call the question. This one will do by a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all.
Take care.
Thank you.
Take care, man.
Have a great day.
Be good.
Bye, everybody.
See you tomorrow.
Matt, are you still there?
Yes, I am.
Um, we're not recording now, right?
Um, hold on a second. Stop.